We'll now call the special meeting for the Lompoc City Council for Friday, March 27, 2020 to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Mayor Protam Gilda Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item is the consideration of requests for Explore Lompoc and other lodging businesses for relief for transient occupancy tax and adoption of Resolution Number 6311[61.51][61.51](20) as a result of her position as President and Chair, Councilmember Cordova?
Yes, I will recuse myself for this item, being that I do serve as President for Explore Lompoc.
Thank you. We will call you back to the dais when we are on Item Two.
Thank you, Mary and Council. Do you mind if I do it here? Do you want me to get up? The city has received requests, one from Explore Lompoc as well as other hoteliers, to ask the city council to approve the delay of payment for the March 2020 payment of transient occupancy tax, hotel tax, TOT as we call it, as well as any of the late fees or penalties that would go along with that to a date in the future. The request from Explore Lompoc actually said, quote, "That the city of Lompoc immediately waive all late fees associated with the late payment of TOT and furthermore provide -- and furthermore that you provide an immediate relief of TOT payments to all hotels in the city of Lompoc by allowing a commencement period of 60 days of no TOT payments and set up a payment plan for the repayment of those TOT monies due," end quote. This request is outside of myself or our finance director's ability. There's nothing in the statute, the code, that says I can make that change or modify it. So their request needed to be brought forth to the city council for your consideration. Council does have the ability to state that the hoteliers must abide by the ordinance as it currently stands, which means if it's due, it's payable and to move forward. It also has mentioned in the draft resolution that was sent out to waive fees and penalties for late payment with the suggestion of requiring full payment by June 30 of 2020. So the draft resolution states the waiver would apply for only February and March TOT payments. From July 1, 2020 and after, penalties and interest on those payments shall begin to accrue. Payments for April 20, TOT lodging services, shall be due as normal, and that would be on May 31, 2020. Also in the draft resolution is that it applies to only lodging businesses that are current in their TOT payments to the city. But that's my quick report. Dean and I are both here to answer any questions you may have on that.
Councilmember Starbuck?
What are the fiscal impacts, Mr. Troop? I know we don't have a report here or anything, and I don't expect us to be down to the dollar cents on it, but what generally, what are we dealing with here?
I'm actually, I'm going to turn it to Dean. He has the, he's the number man at the moment.
I don't have a microphone there, so here I am. We usually get about 2.2 million annually, so we're talking about 180. Hotels have been pretty low. I think the last month they reported would be January, I believe, was about 105, 110,000. So it gives you an idea of the magnitude between 110 and 180.
So, right now, what's outstanding? What is due to the, to the city?
Right now, I mean, for this, what they're talking about, it will be due March 31st. So that's why we're having the special meeting, because they would have to pay February's, Tuesday.
Yeah, so the estimate, I think--
Yeah, roughly, what's the amount that's--
We don't know, because they haven't submitted them yet.
Submitted what's due.
They submit their returns and with their checks, and then we know.
But, but looking at what's been out there, was 180 down to 105, so probably the lower number because of the changes that have been going on.
And this is usually a light season, too. It usually is pretty light this time of year.
You're guessing a little over 100,000 then on this. What is the past due amounts? You said that there was, didn't say, but it says, you know, only people that are current. So I'm going to assume there are some that are not current.
I believe we can mention the dollar amounts, but we don't want to get into the--
Currently, there's probably about 150,000 that's outstanding that hasn't been submitted on time.
So, we do recover that eventually, but we just don't know when?
That's the plan. Councilmember Mosby?
Do we know how many employees, how many hundreds of employees the hotels have?
I know Paul talked to me, and he said he laid off 34 people, so I don't, I really am not privy of how many people are employed there, though.
I think there's, there's a few hundred amongst all the hotels when you combine. How many are still there, I don't know, but, you know, because it's one of the, one of their objectives here is to be able to use this money as they just and, and keep as many people employed as possible as they state there. So are you looking at a penalty, if there's 100 grand, it's a 10% penalty?
Correct.
Yeah, so you're looking at a 10,000, and you're not asking, they're not asking to not pay the TOT, so they'd still be obligated to pay. And I think as long as we get this before July 1, we're probably okay as far as all your accounting practices go and everything?
Yeah, you can only modify or accrue, I mean, you can only extend it 60 days. We do that anyways, so, because usually sometimes they'll, they'll straggle in a little bit later, where we won't get the exact numbers, but we always want to track them on the 30th, so we have a good reflection of what happened during that period.
So other than just having it, the cash on hand, extending this a little bit, it ultimately doesn't affect the city other than a potential penalty, penalty that the city might ever sue?
Or the potential that they may get too far behind and not be able to make that payment by June 30, or even later.
Right.
Because I know none of us know how long this is going to last. We really don't.
Because then, then at that point, what I would suggest, and I forgot if it was in the resolution after we read it, would be if it, if the payments aren't made by that date, that fees and penalties would start accruing again.
That, that is in the resolution. Basically, the, the new due date for purposes of starting late fees would be June 30.
Would there be any change if we did this and we say you're in good standing as of January 1? Would that affect us in either way? At the end of the day, would it affect us? We just took this, because, you know, a lot of people started getting hurt come January. I know they started, they started feeling the effects, even though we didn't have the announcements and such, you started seeing people panicking at that time, just, in other words, if you were in good standing as of January 1?
We, we would have to go back and look. I'm, I'm thinking from our discussions that those, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, but I think those that were already not current, I believe were still not current at that point.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, not knowing the numbers, I'm just thinking, if we picked a date, just, if you're current as of January 1, we potentially could do this for you. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Councilmember Vega?
So again, for clarity, we do have the ability to give them a little bit more time without a penalty and without interest. Is that correct? Just for clarity.
Yes.
Okay. My issue might be is there's some level of privacy and confidentiality with who pays, who don't, who doesn't. So I think to be fair, probably would be for everyone, because in the event that the resolution or whatever comes out of this makes the hoteliers unhappy, do they also have the ability to appeal to council? Under the appeal process, and I guess it's a question, because then would the confidentiality aspect of it be something we're going to have to deal with? Because if someone's not current with their payments right now, how would they maintain that confidentiality if they had to appeal to council?
They have the, they hold the confidentiality. So if the hotel owner doesn't have a problem with letting it be known publicly that they're the ones who are behind in payments, then they can come to the council and they can ask--
Okay.
--for you to change the policy. They could also come to you privately and ask for you to change the policy, and then you can make a council request to do it.
Thank you for that clarification. I wanted to make sure, because if they come back and appeal, and then it's good to know that they have the ability to tell us on their own that they're behind on payments or not without confidentiality bringing broken, so, thanks.
If those that are behind were to already have a payment plan in place, would that be an exception we could make for them qualifying for this, so that it, it allows them to take advantage of the current issue, but not penalize them for prior bad business decisions that they're already dealing with, not, you know, not compounded by the recent crisis? Because anything prior to this is, is business decisions. This is crisis, and I'd hate for anyone to not be able to utilize this due to prior bad business decisions if, if they're at least making plans to deal with it. So I would like to consider that if they have a payment plan arranged and are starting that process, that they might be considered able to take advantage of this option so it wouldn't compound their issues.
There's currently no hotels that have a payment plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff before we open it to Councilmember Vega?
Without getting into the confidentiality thing, you can talk about numbers, but you can't say or tell us how far behind maybe somebody might be or what we're dealing with right now? Is someone a year behind, a year and a half behind without divulging the names?
As long as there's multiple people behind and we don't name the names, then we can say--
Sure, I'd like to know what we're dealing with and what the city's dealing with.
There's currently a few of them that are behind. Far back is August, September, October, and almost all the way up to the current time.
So there aren't anyone, no one's more than a year behind?
No one's more than a year. August is, I think, the oldest date.
Okay.
That would have been due in September.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, we'll begin public comment. Due to the nature of the social distancing, we'll begin with the in-room public comments first, then we'll go to the phone line. For those of you that are watching from home, you may call in at 805-875-8201. It will be answered. You'll be placed on hold if you're not the first person to make comment. There is no music or hold music playing. It will be quiet, so don't panic that you've been hung up on. If you call in, just like in council chambers, you'll have three minutes. It's a statement period. If there are any questions, you may include them, but there will be no answer or exchange of those questions. We, we don't do that in council, so it won't be done via the phone. And then, once we finish with the phone comments, we'll bring it back and have any email commentary noted. So we'll begin with the in-room public comments, and so if you're here to speak on this item, please step forward to the podium. Seeing no one rise, we'll close the in-room commentary, and we will go over to our phone commentary. Do we have any calls coming in?
Do we have a call? Are we ready to take it now?
Yes.
Be patient with us, as this is a new methodology to deal with the current requirements.
You're still there on the line? Just a minute, we're trying to transfer you over. Hi, you've reached the Lompoc City Council meeting. Are you looking to provide public comment? Please hold. All right. Transfer. Hi, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Thank you.
You may go now.
Hi, yes, I've been into stores here in Lompoc, and they're-- they're not, like, practicing sanitary instructions, like, as far as their payments, hats, and not wearing masks and gloves. Is this part of, like, practicing social distancing and trying to keep everybody safe here in Lompoc?
I believe-- I believe that call was not related to the subject at hand. The calls should be regarding the item we're currently discussing, which is the request for a transient occupancy tax business relief resolution. So if you're calling on any other matter, please refrain and call our main hotline for those issues.
Next call?
Yes, please.
Hi, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Hi, yes. My name is Atul Patel, and I am a hotel owner here in Lompoc, and I'm calling regarding the bed tax relief that Explore Lompoc sent a letter in on. And I guess my only concern is that, obviously, we're in uncharted waters right now, and understanding that people or other businesses have been past due, but in all essence, we're just trying to live for the, for today, going forward, and I think it would be appreciative of the city council to make this exception, considering the circumstances that we're going through. I don't think anybody does not want to pay their bed tax in a timely manner, but unfortunately, sometimes circumstances doesn't allow us to. All we're requesting is some sort of assistance without a late fee and a penalty. It would greatly appreciate it if the council would just consider that, and, you know, whoever has fallen behind from the past, have the city manager, as well as Mr. Albro, just deal with them one-on-one for prior past payments, and leave this as a different item altogether for the time being. I appreciate your time, and I thank you for having this special council meeting and taking time out of your day. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any additional calls?
Nothing right now.
All right. Cindy Clark, did we have any emails regarding this?
We did not receive any other emails for this. We did receive a letter in an email from Explore Lompoc. I don't know if you want me to read it, because everybody received it. It's on the website, it's out front.
Thank you. All right. Given the phone is not ringing, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for council for further discussion or a motion. Councilmember Vega?
This is for Dean. The fiscal side of this, okay, if someone was to receive a waiver or some sort of, not a waiver, but a delay in payment, and it's 100,000 or 105,000 or 110,000, and they, they resume their payments, how soon would the city need to recoup what was lost without a financial impact to the city budget?
Well, we're hoping that they would be current by the June 30, which is when we do our financial statements. So there'd be little to no impact if they were to not make their payment after that point in time, they would be hit with penalties.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mosby?
I'd be willing to go along with the resolution that's, as written, except for the one change of living from March 27, 2020 to January 1, 2020, on the, the payment time.
Can you tell me exactly where that is on the resolution, please?
Page two, three in the middle. This is March 27.
Second page, what para?
One, two, three, fourth. Isn't it section three, Council?
So, again, page two, section--
It's the fourth, whereas, I believe?
If I could interrupt, if, if the council wanted to make that change, we would just, on page two of three, we would delete-- we would delete that fourth whereas. And then in section three, on page three of three, we would change March 27 to January 1.
Is that--
What he said.
All right. Councilmember Vega?
I do have a question on the penalties moving forward. If, if they were to, we were to adopt a delay in payment, about a late fee or a interest payment for the people in arrears, probably doesn't seem to be fair with the current environment to penalize someone that's going through this COVID-19 epidemic. So my question is, does that, is that including your, your proposal? Is that including a way, a late payment and interest payment penalty?
Councilmember Mosby?
Well, as written here, the suggestion language is those people who are current as of that date. I'm just asking that date go to January 1 of this year, showing that if you paid up to that time, because that's, you're affected because of the virus, and it's not a business payment. So you're not, I don't want to say awarding for bad behavior, but it's having the people who are already out of, whoever's out of date at that time, you're reasoning, you had other reasonings why you were. This case here, because of the state of the emergency, and staying with the, the nature of the emergency component, why we're doing any of this, trying to specifically pinpoint it towards the emergency component, not to give the other, whatever the other issues were from before for other, even if there were anybody who was telling it prior to January, like, I think you said somebody was, but I'm trying to more pinpoint it about the emergency component. So that's why I'm looking at that, at that date.
Yeah, my question is, are we going to be putting someone behind by putting the penalty? I understand there, as we heard public comment, there are people are trying to tread water and, and stay afloat, and no one's more than a year or six months in arrears. I'm just wondering if we also had a provision that if these people that are behind come up with a payment plan for what their arrears are with this resolution, with their, with their late fees and, and interest payments, could they be waived because of this epidemic?
So going with the same, but if somebody came forward with a payment plan to take care of the back?
Well, a payment plan that would, some sort of a payment plan that would resume when the dates expire here for what we're trying to do. I guess what I'm trying to do is, is, is these people have a lot invested, and I don't think anybody frivolously would not pay, but I think to be fair, why don't we give someone the opportunity to step up to the plate, create a payment plan that would, that would somehow help them get out of it after this, this epidemic or this free space, so to speak, expires? Someone may step up and say, hey, you know what? We know we've been behind, but we want to make whatever the payment is, you know? It's a, it's a thought so that everyone can get out of this ahead of time instead of burying somebody even worse.
Let's see, the staff might have answered that question.
I'd like us to see if they have a recommendation on how we can accommodate that, because if somebody in good faith would step up to the plate and say, we want to deal with this, and we haven't done it correctly, because we don't want to get deeper in debt.
If I could, I usually don't entertain payment plans, because they're stealing money that's not theirs.
Okay.
To me, it's embezzlement, and that's the ground where they should not be. So I don't normally entertain payment plans.
Okay. To, to, just to add a little bit of maybe detail or explanation to that, TOT is not a payment from the hotel to the city. TOT is a payment from the person who's staying in the hotel to the city, and the hotel is just a, is just a middleman. That money that the, that the hotel guests pay on their hotel bill is, is owned by the city, that the hotel is required to give it to us. That's why Mr. Albro was referring to it as embezzlement. It is a crime, and people, hotel owners have been prosecuted before for using TOT money that's the city's money and not paying it to them. So we're not proposing here any forgiveness of TOT. We're just proposing a, a waiver of late fees and penalties.
Well, my, my second question would be, are all the hotels here a member of Explore Lompoc, for clarity, for the public?
Yes, all, all the hotels within the city.
So what level of responsibility does Explore Lompoc take for having a membership globally of these hotels that fall behind? Being that we do have a TBIT out there, and there is money going back to fund a different kind of marketing to help Lompoc and help their business and economic development, which is all positive, I'm just--
It's, the, the TBIT is very positive. What, I'm just making an assumption here, is when they've called up to the city asking, where is their payment, and the payment is smaller because it hasn't had a full TOT payment, because it's, it's the city's TOT payment as well as the assessment that they collect that goes to Explore Lompoc, so they function and market the city. We have had them call in asking, where's the money? And so they might, I'm just assuming, that they might want to talk to everyone in their, within the Tourism Business Improvement District Group, that's the hoteliers, and ask why they're not all, you know, they won't know who's not paying, but they can tell everybody, you all have to pay what is due, and it's really a self-monitoring on their part of it, because it is a separate entity from the city.
So TOT, when a hotel comes in here and they open up, they have an agreement with the city to pay bed tax. In defense of the city, what tools do you have available when someone doesn't pay? Since we don't have a payment plan and someone's in default, and you consider it embezzlement, do we have any tools that are available except to look the other way and accept payment when they feel like making it, because they are an established business with a sizable investment?
That's, that's where we would talk to our city attorney and take, at that point, legal action. Our first step is not to go that, that's, that's the, the last resort. We will talk to them, we'll send them letters, we'll continue to ask them for that payment. As both the city attorney and the finance director said, that money collected, as it comes in, it's separated out, and it should be separated out in an accounting function, room rates, taxes, et cetera, et cetera. That should be immediately sent to the city, and if it's not, that, that's the problem. So we have been trying to work with the different hoteliers that are--
with the city to pay bed tax. In defense of the city, what tools do you have available when someone doesn't pay? Since we don't have a payment plan, and someone's in default, and you consider it embezzlement, do we have any tools that are available except to look the other way and accept payment when they feel like making it, because they are an established business with a sizable investment?
That's where we would talk to our city attorney and take, at that point, legal action. Our first step is not to go that, that's the last resort. We will talk to them, we'll send them letters, we'll continue to ask them for that payment. As both the city attorney and the finance director said, that money collected, as it comes in, it's separated out. It should be separated out in an accounting function, room rates, taxes, et cetera, et cetera. That should be immediately sent to the city, and if it's not, that's the problem. So we have been trying to work with the different hoteliers that are behind. If it does get to a point where then we would have to pull the city attorney's office into that to say, you know, maybe the first course would be to have them send a letter from the attorney's office. Sometimes that gets the ball rolling again, but it could go up as, I think Jeff had said, that there is times for prosecution have been gone. I think up in Lake Tahoe area, there was one or two hoteliers up there that actually were prosecuted for that.
So is the city, without a payment plan, but there's a sizable investment in revenue generation here, we have no tools in our pocket other than prosecution, and what you're telling me is, we're renewing business licenses to people that haven't paid what they should be paying? Is that correct?
Yeah. If a business license has been renewed, I don't know if Stacy has, yeah. So we would be renewing that.
It's another tool, is what I'm asking. You, in fact, don't have any way of recouping that money. What you're saying, they shouldn't be keeping that money because it was based on heads in beds by people that actually purchased a room, and that tax was paid for doing, through their room rate. Is that correct?
Yes. The visitor actually paid that, not the hotel.
So we're stuck with having to work with people anyway, but we don't have any provisions when they get behind, except to wait and hope and prosecution? Is that basically what we're looking at?
One of the big ones that, and a lot of cities have it, is that 10% penalty to be late. That can go from a thousand, two thousand, it can go far, depending on the size of the hotel and how popular of a hotel it is. It could be a $10,000 late penalty fee. So it's substantial, and that's sort of the stick or the carrot to get the people to put it in on time, because that continues. It's not a one time, it'll continue to accrue, so the bill keeps growing.
Fully understand, and I look at it in a positive way, because for economic balance and revenue generation, you know, we should be supporting all our businesses. I get it that, and I think the public gets it, that when someone doesn't pay, they're having a hardship. How we deal with our hardship doesn't sound like we're able to deal with it with much strength. So I wanted to ask this question. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution with the change of eliminating the fourth paragraph on page two and changing the date in section three to January 1, 2020. Do I have a second for that?
I'll go ahead in a second.
We have a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Aye.
Councilmember Mosby?
Aye.
Mayor Potam Gilda Cordova?
Abstained.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Yes. So that passes four, zero, with one abstention. We will now ask Councilmember Cordova to return to the dais, so that we can move to item two.
Item two is the confirmation of proclamation, number two, of the Director of Emergency Service regarding temporarily prohibiting residential and commercial evictions within the city of Lompoc for non-payment of rent or foreclosure related to the COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to executive order N 2820. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think we're going to have our city attorney discuss this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item arises out of the public health emergency that was declared by all levels of our government, including you, Scl. Lompoc City Council, over the past couple of weeks. One of the governor's executive orders from March 16, provided that cities in the state are allowed to ban commercial and residential evictions if the eviction is due to a loss of income, business, or household income due to impacts from the COVID-19 coronavirus, and if that relationship to COVID-19 is documented. The state did not do that at a state level, it just gave local governments the ability to ban those evictions, both residential and commercial. A few days ago, on March 24, our city manager, serving as the Director of Emergency Services in Lompoc, did take action and signed a proclamation, which is in your staff report, banning both residential and commercial evictions in Lompoc. Again, if the eviction is due to non-payment of rent, due to a loss of business or household income that's related to the COVID-19 emergency, and if that relationship to COVID-19 is documented. So as our municipal code states, anytime the city manager issues one of these emergency orders under his authority, because there is a state of emergency, city council is to review and either confirm or overturn that order as soon as is practicable. So because we're having a special meeting today, we decided to bring this to you as well with the other agenda item. But in late breaking news today, the governor issued a new executive order, executive order N 3720, earlier today, that now on a state level, this is a statewide order prohibiting residential evictions, essentially, that are caused by the COVID-19 emergency. So, but it does not prevent commercial evictions that are caused by COVID-19. So what we then have tonight, how this affects our agenda item, is the decision whether to confirm the city manager's order about residential evictions is kind of moot, because the state has already done that at a state level. So really, the only thing to decide tonight is whether the council wants to confirm the city manager's order banning commercial evictions that are due to a loss of business income due to COVID-19, and that is documented, that relationship to COVID-19 has to be documented. So that does complete my staff report, and I'm available for questions.
So due to the new governor's order, how does it affect any statement he made in the prior order, which did include local jurisdictions' option to add commercial? Does that invalidate the entire prior order or recommendation, or is that option still available because he didn't take a full level, that the local jurisdiction, due to the prior order stating it was available, still an option to us?
The governor said that his new order supersedes the old order in any way that it's in conflict.
Okay.
Okay? So because his new order prohibits residential evictions and doesn't say anything about commercial, that means that local governments can still prohibit commercial evictions if they want to.
Okay.
Or they could decide not to.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Mosby?
I think one other option or reason to rescind our, at least the residential component, is it would take out a potential litigation to the city.
That's a good point. That's true. If we just wanted to be completely silent on residential and go with whatever the state is saying...
Take us out of the loop with the component, let them, they got a lot more money than we do.
I agree. I agree.
Any other questions for staff? Councilmember Mosby?
Can you think any reason why, and maybe they will later, why the governor didn't put a commercial component in here?
I have no idea.
It's peculiar. I'm just wondering what else. Not to say he wouldn't do something another couple of days, I just...
I think that was a policy or political decision that he made. I don't know the reason why.
Any other questions for staff before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we will again follow the order of in-room public comment first, followed by phone commentary, followed by email. Again, for the public, the phone number is 805-875-8201. The calls should be pertaining to the matter we are discussing. You will be answered. If there are multiple calls, you will be put on hold. There is no hold music, so don't panic if it's quiet. You will have three minutes, much like you have three minutes in the room to speak, and it is for statements and questions, which you're welcome to ask, but will not receive a response, because we do not respond to questions during this time. So we will begin with in-room public comments. So if you're here to speak on this matter, and you would like to approach the podium, you have three minutes for this item. Seeing no one rise, we'll close the in-room public comments and move to the phone. Give it a few minutes, not a few minutes, a few seconds. I won't close that, we'll leave that while we hear from the city clerk. Oh, see?
Hello, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes for public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Osborne and councilmembers. My name is Rob Trailer. I'm a Lompoc business owner. Thank you for the opportunity to remotely participate in this special meeting. I completely understand the impetus for a moratorium on commercial on Lompoc in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. Businesses that have grown to a halt because of a stay-at-home order places incredible pressure on a business. However, I believe it's important to distinguish and differentiate, on one hand, the non-payment of rent as a result of decreased income and business associated with COVID-19, and on the other hand, the non-payment of rent, and even more so for a business deemed essential, that are, for all practical purposes, completely unrelated to COVID-19. Having clear guidance, specifically what constitutes sufficient documentation, as the city attorney alluded to, that would connect non-payment with COVID-19, that guidance will be beneficial for the city, its business owners, the courts, and attorneys that might be filing any actions therein, and doing so will avoid denying parties a legal remedy over the next two months. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for that call.
And we do have another call as well.
Great.
Hello, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Yes, I'm concerned about the senior citizens here in Lompoc. And I want to know what kind of rent relief the city of Lompoc is trying to provide for them in lieu of this COVID-19 pandemic.
So you may want to let them know they need to turn off their TV or their computer in the back and re-ask that question, because it seems to be interfering.
Hi, would you mind turning off your TV or whatever's making noise in the background and repeat your question?
Of course.
Thank you.
I want to know what the city of Lompoc is doing, okay, in lieu of the fact that there are thousands of senior citizens here in Lompoc paying rent, and what kind of relief they have discovered through proclamation, that they're going to help all of us pay our rent, buy our groceries, et cetera. I would like for you to answer that question in lieu of the fact that there is COVID-19 in Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. It is not necessarily something in relation to this, other than the governor has issued a mandate saying that no evictions can be done during this time if you've been impacted and have proof of that. So I appreciate your question, and if you would email that to us or call our hotline on Monday, we might be able to connect you with those that are assisting seniors. That number is 805-875-8071, and it's on our city website, and you may be able to connect with organizations that are providing relief to senior citizens on that. Seeing no more calls regarding item number two, we'll bring it back to our city clerk regarding any email communications regarding this item.
We did receive two email public comments. I'm happy to read them if you want. They've been put on the website, they are available here in the public area, and have been provided to all councilmembers and staff. Would any of council like them read in?
Seeing no one asked to read it in, we all have copies, and as she, clerk, stated, they are on the city website and can. One was concerned about the eviction statement and how that would be justified, and how it would be dealt with by those that could not evict, and the other was from a local business stating that they would like us to consider the same for commercial at this time. Seeing no additional public comments, we will close that timeframe and bring it back to council for discussion regarding the commercial eviction resolution portion of the, Councilmember Mosby?
I think since our city manager made his declaration, significant changes have happened with over $2 trillion worth of funding out there, a lot of that available for commercial. I think it's changed the potentials for businesses drastically out there, a lot of funding that is available, both SBA loans, and I believe there's quite, there's a multitude of components to assist with businesses, to, more so probably than there is for residential components. I believe that there are, without a doubt, businesses that have been hurt, but I believe that that is something that they should negotiate with either their landlord, their banker, or whatever it might be on that level. I agree, and I'm glad that the governor actually took this in his hands, and potentially has taken a lot of significant litigation off us with the residential matter. It's, I find it rather peculiar that he hasn't touched the commercial component yet, and I just wonder if he's trying to stay out of the potential litigation component, as I believe it's important for us to limit our liability, especially since if the state's going to bite the apple, let them take it and let them run with it. I think that's significant. I think we should mirror what the governor has done, and if he changes something in the future, he's got a lot deeper pockets than we do when it comes to litigation. It's more of his proverbial sandbox, does it say? I think it's significant that we're actually advancing our potential code ordinance and such into potential constitutional law, as the Fifth Amendment allows for the rights to life, liberty, and property, and we're kind of mendling in areas that are way above city codes. It's just, it's amazing where we're traveling under this emergency protocol. We're advancing ourselves well beyond Lompoc's little general codebook, and I think it'd be prudent for us to probably back off and let the state and the federal government handle these situations, much as the governor did with the residential component.
Councilmember Cordova?
For the city attorney, is there a difference if the resolution or the proclamation was passed, is there a difference between somebody having, or using it with a landlord per se, versus a financial institution? Does it have more weight, I guess is my question, when you're using it directly with an owner, like a landlord versus a financial institution?
I think as far as the eyes of the law, a landlord is seen the same as a... I think as far as the eyes of the law, a landlord is seen the same as a financial institution. It doesn't matter whether it's an individual landlord or a big company. Our, our order and the Constitution treats them the same.
Okay. And would this actually, let's say a business, a large business in town, this was to pass, and a large business in town was to use that as a means for communicating, let's say, with a financial institution, how, how much weight does a financial institution really bear to, to take on that and say, okay, well, yeah, I'm not going to, you know, evict you from that?
I think the way that it would probably come up, unless we as a city wanted to get very aggressive, is when the unlawful detainer action were filed in court for the landlord or financial institution to try to evict their commercial tenant, the commercial tenant would use our resolution as a defense in court. That's one way that our resolution can be used. Another way that our resolution can be used is the city could go out and actually fine the landlord for trying to evict during this time period. Those are two ways that it could happen, be enforced.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Vega?
I think we should be really careful in getting into the business side of it. We've already made rules and regulations to limit, because of the COVID-19 virus that basically is killing all their businesses, is killing their business, and I think that to, I believe that it's a partnership when a landlord allows a business to move into their property and expects them to thrive, so I would kind of think that they would be on the same page as far as wanting them to succeed, because I do not believe they just want to evict somebody in this environment and then expect somebody to come in and, and be successful. I think that it's going to be one of those things where it's going to take some common sense. I think my only comment would be is if you had an out-of-state landlord, or, you know, someone with no skin in the game or no feeling, you know, that would put undue pressure on someone, which would concern me with a large shopping center project, or, or something like that, where people, all they are is a property manager, where they're just looking for their commission, and that's what this is all about. There's economics there where someone's losing money because the chain is not just directly to the landlord. It's like any restaurant, you have, you have dairy, you have the farmers, you have everyone else connected, and I believe the chain of command, when you're going through a, a commercial property manager, it's, it's, it's a different game because you've signed a lease, and there's substantial money online. So I, I think we should reframe from getting involved in it at this time. I think that we could probably readdress this if some people were feeling undue stress. I don't think it's something we have to take up at this moment. I haven't heard of the financial industries coming in and saying they're going to bail out the portfolios that have the high risk. What I've heard is when people are buying and financing, or interest rates have gone up, so, so risk is, is higher than ever, so it's going to be really hard for someone even to purchase property that's expected to return in income because the likelihood of getting a new tenant during this pandemic is next to nothing. So personally, I think we should stay away from the commercial aspect of it unless we have or know of people right now that are being taken advantage of.
Do we, as a city, have an idea of how many absentee owners exist in our community?
I looked, this was a few months back, trying to look into that, and the, what I was coming up with is about 60 to 65% absentee owners versus those that actually live and own the properties here in town.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby?
I don't know if the city attorney knows this. I've heard what the sheriff's actions are currently, whether they're doing, issuing eviction notices. I kind of heard that the courts are so stacked up and no jury trials for a couple of months and everything else. I think the courts and the sheriff have kind of taken, made this a mute process.
I don't know what the sheriff's status is, but I do know that almost all courts in the state have, have postponed all hearings unless it's extremely important for many months.
So I, I think that, again, putting our noses somewhere and putting ourselves in potential litigation, I, I think we probably should stay away from that, and the courts are pretty much taking this one, made it a mute issue, and, and the governor took care of the other component of it.
Councilmember Cordova?
So I do agree with, with us being cautious to take on this type of resolution or proclamation, but I, but I will say that I, I do disagree with the points that are being made in regards to saying, you know, that a landlord, it would be in their best interest to work with a business. Once you go into default, once a business goes into default, there's a lot of things that get triggered, whether it's, you know, the, the loss of a building, or, or going in and having to pay in or balloon payment balances on their loans, et cetera. And so to, to take it lightly and say that that's not what's going on in our community, I disagree. I think that the business that wrote in fully understands that when you have a very thriving business, and it, it generates millions of dollars, and you have a pandemic such as this, it can completely tear down that business, and it, and there, there is a, I guess there would be an interest from a landlord or financial institution to come in and say, and swoop in and say, okay, we'll, we'll pick that up, thank you very much, and then go out and resell that business again. So I just don't want to make light of the fact that these businesses are losing a lot of money. So to say that they are not, you know, that this is, that this is light, it really is not. There's people that are losing millions in this community right now, that are millions of dollars invested in our community. They chose our community. So although with that point made, I still do think that we should tread softly with taking on this kind of, of proclamation.
I am very concerned at the level of absentee ownership and corporate international real estate ownership in our community, and how that might impact especially our small business owners. So while I do respect the potential for litigation, I think it's really important that those local business owners let us know as soon as possible that you are already hearing of potential impacts, and reach out to us as soon as possible. We can reach out to our state and federal level relationships. They are speaking with us bi-weekly, so anything that we are concerned with is getting communicated back to the state and the federal level as quickly as possible on this. So while we may not move forward on this this evening, it is of very large concern for me that in a community that strives to be business-friendly, we are missing an opportunity to potentially protect our really small businesses that do lease, and a great deal of them lease from out-of-town ownership, international corporate ownership, who may not, as Councilmember Vega said, have skin in the game, and aren't sympathetic to the local aspect of our community and how many are small business owners. Councilmember Mosby?
I'd be willing to make the motion that we terminate the, as per paragraph, under discussion. Do I need to?
Rescind the balance of the declaration?
He used the ruling, the word terminated. It's pretty aggressive.
Do you mean a motion just to terminate the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
In light of what, like I say, what the governor has done with the residential component, and the new bill that was signed in, the $2 trillion that's available for a lot of, for business components.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Councilmember Vega?
I do concur with your, with your comments, Mayor, that I think the businesses, please reach out, because if we do run into that component of where there's a hardship or someone's turning the knife, so to speak, in your back, and they're not being fair with you because all they're worried about is the almighty dollar in this pandemic, I think that's when this, us as a council can take some action, and I think that we should take action if someone's being treated unfairly in our community. As of, as of right now, I think what, it would be in our best interest just to allow everybody to do their homework through the SBA process, through all the other loan processes, and, and then we can come up and, and, and since this, all this money just, was just voted on, so let's find out exactly what help they may be able to get, and then at the same token, let's keep our ears open so that we can help our community if need be, because that's what we're here for.
Thank you. So we'll take roll call on this vote.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Aye.
Councilmember Mosby?
Aye.
Mayor Potam Gilda Cordova?
Aye.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Nay.
That passes four, one, and that completes the agenda for our special meeting. Before I adjourn, I would like to remind the public that we have set up a city hotline. That number is 805-875-8071. It is available Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we do have a Spanish speaker as part of the answering, so if you do need that assistance, we have it. It is not just, it's evolved from just being city information to information about rent issues, small business association, getting your prescriptions. We have pulled together as much information as possible for those answering the phone, and if we don't have the answer, we are willing to find it for you. We are also storing most of that information on our city webpage. There is a shortcut you can click on over the weekend to look for answers, so when you go to cityoflompoc.org, dot com, you'll see an immediate landing page. If you click there, it will take you to information about ourselves and all the links that we are collecting. If it's COVID-19 questions specifically, there is a hotline set up by the county. It is 833-688-5551. It is available seven days a week from 9:00 to 6:00. Please remember, be safe, be calm, be kind, practice social distancing, and we will get through this together. I adjourn this until our next regular Lompoc meeting at 6:30 p.m. on April 7th, 2020.